Okay, if I can ask folks to get settled, please. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can't read a thing. So, blinding lights. So I'd like to welcome you to the Town Council meeting for Thursday, October 8th. It's a little bit different. We're starting out here at Abbey Griffin so that we can have a larger audience. And I welcome you all for coming. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. At this point, we're gonna skip through our agenda a little bit and go straight to recognitions. Number one in our recognitions is the Town Council presented recognition award to our retiring Police Chief Denise Roy in recognition of her retirement from the Merrimack Police Department after almost 27 years of full-time service to the Merrimack Police Department, January 16 of 1994 to October 15 of 2020. Denise also served as a part-time capacity for three years prior to being hired full-time. And so Denise, are you here with us? What I wanted to do was ask Deputy Chief Brian LeVek if he would come up and say a few words.
Absolutely. Are they gonna be nice ones though?
I don't know.
I still work, you still work for me for another week.
She reminds me of that all the time, so I'm used to it. So just a brief history about Denise's career at the Merrimack Police Department. As the Chairman stated, started in 1991 as a part-time officer. 1994 became a full-time officer. She, her career spanned every position of the PD Department with Detective 2002, Sergeant 2007, Lieutenant 2007, and Pre-Prosecutor from 2008, 2010, and Captain 2017, and Chief as October 2017. We've all been very fortunate to have Denise with us. She's been very, very caring as a boss. She cares about every single employee we have here. Her biggest concern is every single employee we have at the PD Department, at the department. She worries at night like most of us do about what happens and their safety. Bottom line is, we couldn't have asked for a better boss. She's progressive. She's always willing to talk whenever you need to. I think it represents how well she was liked by the tenants of the Police Department right now, the number of officers that are off duty that came to see her. To say she's gonna be missed is a sore understatement. We like a comical value to. We don't appreciate the pictures from the beach in Maine. That's, and I'm sure we're gonna be seeing them down the floor at the same time. Bottom line is, Chief, you're gonna be sorely missed, and we're looking forward to the last week with you. Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to invite Representative Hench to come up to offer a proclamation from the Governor.
I don't wanna fall. Well Denise, this is very special for me, as you know. You and I have been friends for years, and we've been through a lot together, and it's a great friendship, and we're gonna miss you, so. State of New Hampshire by Excellently Governor Christopher T. Sununu, Governor. Citation: Be it hereby known that I, Christopher T. Sununu, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, join with my fellow citizens in extending my personal best wishes and sincerest congratulations to Chief Denise Roy on her retirement as Chief of Police in Merrimack, New Hampshire. Chief Roy began her career as a part-time officer in 1991, moved through the ranks to become Chief in 2017. She was assigned to the Attorney General's Task Force from 1999 to 2002 where she worked undercover, and she is a 2015 FBI National Academy graduate. She served with distinction demonstrating professionalism and dedication to her community. On behalf of the citizens of New Hampshire, I commend Chief Denise Roy for her service and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Again, Christopher T. Sununu, Governor, October 7, 2020. Congratulations.
And as promised, although you've received a lot of things along the way because of your time with the Council, we do want to present you with a plaque that states, and I will read it. Presented to Chief Denise Roy upon the occasion of your retirement from the Town of Merrimack Police Department in recognition of the loyal and dedicated full-time service which you have contributed for more than 26 years. Your dedication and devotion to duty has been a tremendous asset to the Town of Merrimack. Quite the understatement. We wish to extend to you our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance of duty from January 16, 1994 to October 15 of 2020, presented by the Merrimack Town Council and Town Manager, to Denise Roy. Now, if you would like this to say something, you serve it? No problem.
You know I like to talk, so. Eileen, I laminated it.
You did.
I did. All right, I have a bet that I'm not gonna cry. I'm not gonna do it, so. Good evening, everyone. I wanna thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council for acknowledging me today. Although the circumstances are not ideal for gatherings, I truly, truly appreciate everyone being here. There's so many people that I need to thank for the love and support they have shown me during this amazing career, and I can't possibly thank every person, because we really would be here all night. Just please understand that each and every person that I have worked with taught me something along the way, and I've carried it throughout the years, so I just wanna say thank you to all those people. I promised I also wasn't gonna wear my glasses. There are just a few people that I need to acknowledge first. And although you're behind me, I'm gonna have to read this, so I'm looking at you. Eileen, thank you for the past three years. You have helped me and taught me more than I can tell you. You have reinforced to me how important it is to stand up for something you truly believe in and to stand tall while doing it. You've helped me understand that cooler heads prevail and not everything needs a response. I hope our friendship will continue on, and from one cancer survivor to another, thank you very much. I'd be remiss if I also did not thank the members of this community. The support you have showed the Police Department has been nothing short of amazing. Until you're a law enforcement officer, you don't realize how important community support is. The members of the Merrimack Police Department are lucky to be part of such a wonderful community. Thank you to my family. Without all of you, this career would not have been, I would not have been so successful in this career, because being the youngest of seven kids forces you to have thick skin, which is the number-one attribute a police officer needs, especially in today's environment. Your support for the last 30 years has always been a constant, and I love you for it. Thank you, Chris. Without you by my side for the last three years, I am confident I would have gone crazy. You listened to me vent, and you absolutely told me when I was being ridiculous. You made me feel confident even when I didn't feel it myself. I can't wait for the next chapter. Thank you. All right, this is the part I will not cry, I promise. Brian, Matt, Eric, and Kerry. I don't know how to express the love and gratitude I have for all of you. You have been with me through the best of days and the absolute worst of days. I've grown up with you. We've argued like brothers and sisters, but we always know, no matter what, no matter how right I always was, we are there for each other. Your unwavering support has humbled me. Continue to rule the world, that's an inside joke, and finish what we all started way back when, and please, always look out for each other. Now, to the most important people that I need to thank, each and every member of the Merrimack Police Department. You are the heart and soul of this organization. You are the women and men who fearlessly and selflessly protect our community. I'd write him a ticket. Your dedication to this, our chosen profession inspires me. The respect you have for one another is steadfast, which is extremely important in this profession. Continue to move forward, be open-minded, and always look out for one another. You have helped me fight when I needed the support. There are no words I could say which would describe my gratitude for you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I'm not paying you, Brian. Thirty years has gone by in the blink of an eye. It's hard to believe it's coming to an end, but it has hands-down been the best decision I have ever made. Every officer is always asked why we become police officers, and most of us say, "To help people," but end that sentence with, "I know, it sounds corny." I'm here to tell you, it's not corny. It's noble, and without people like you helping others, the world would be a horrible place. And because I have to end with a quote, I'm gonna quote the great Winnie the Pooh. How lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard. Stay well, my friends, and please, always be safe. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to offer anybody that's on the Council that wants to make a comment or anything to speak at this point. Anybody? Go ahead, Peter.
I just wanna thank the Chief for continuing the excellence that our Police Department has had over the years. She's done a great job, and the proof that we're bringing another Chief from within is just more evidence of it. Thank you, Denise.
Just real quickly, I can't say enough myself. I really appreciate everything you've offered to our town from the beginning to the very end. I just wanna tell you a quick story that I may have told you, because I told some of my fellow councilors, but back in the 90s at some point, my friend owned a business on Depot Street in one of the warehouse condos, and he had left work to go home that evening, and he would get on the highway at Bedford Road, and he was pulled over by this woman cop who said he spun his tires and, you know, just went on a litany of complaints. And I left it in my head, and then about a month later, I get another, this is personal, I probably shouldn't even say it, right? But I get another, in the read file, I get another complaint, and so I talked to the Chief, I said, "I just wanted to let you know what my friend Charlie said, but it's really not a big deal. He says, 'I'll talk to her.'" And who would have known that that woman became the top dog in the Merrimack PD, and I absolutely appreciate everything. You've been wonderful.
Thank you. I said my piece to you at our last meeting about how I really believe you are an amazing, not just a cop, but an amazing Chief of Police. Three years ago, when we confirmed you, I alluded to the fact that I thought you were nothing less than the consummate professional, and three years later, I still believe that. And you've passed those traits and those values down, not just to your command team, but also to the B-Cops that patrol our streets on a daily basis. So, next time you drive through Merrimack and you see a Merrimack Police car driving by, it could be routine patrol, maybe the lights are blaring, take pride knowing the fact that you had an impact on that officer's ability to effectively police and represent the community of Merrimack. Wearing a badge is a 24-hour thing. It's not something you take, you put on and put off as you please. You know, when you put on the badge, that's a permanent thing, and I've never lost sight of that fact, and you personify that, so. On a personal note, on behalf of my wife, Michelle, my daughter Jade, to you and your family, I wish you nothing but health and happiness for your future, and keep smiling. Thank you very much, Chief Roy, for everything you've done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Getting me up here to talk is a very big deal, because I don't like to talk in public, believe it or not, but because I think so much of this lady here, I had to get up and say something. She has, as she said, we're both cancer survivors, so we've been through some things together relatively within the same time period, but she's taught me so much in terms of how to make, how to grow the people around you, not to just take credit yourself, but to actually, she always makes, she's very humble, and she always speaks so highly of her department and puts all of the credit on the people that work for her. As Bill was saying, the main thing is that there are so, so many fine officers here in Merrimack. It's one of the best police departments I have ever worked with, and I'm proud of all of you, and I'm so proud of Denise for what she has added to enhancing the presence and the stature and the appreciation of the public for all of you. So thank you, Denise. You have meant the world to me.
And while I know a lot of us want to express our wishes, I'd like to offer, if there's anybody that really feels they've got something to add beyond just congratulations to come on up to the mic in front here, to wish Denise well. Obviously, we don't have time tonight for everybody to come up, so, but feel free to move forward, come up to the mic, try to keep it concise. Thank you. Is this working? It's working.
On behalf of the Merrimack Crime Line, it's been an honor and a pleasure for you to work with you over the years and wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. I still got my band on here that I've been wearing since I found out that you had some medical issues going on. I'll still continue to wear it until you tell me to take it off, but it's, Denise, it's been an honor to be working with you and getting all the accolades that you've provided for the Merrimack Crime Line, and we wish you all the best.
Denise, I too, I'm from Crime Line. It's been, can you tell? It's been a pleasure working with you, but I just wanted you to know, even though we can't give you a rocking chair like you wanted, okay? What we're gonna do, we're gonna add your name to the list, Retired Police Chiefs, for the scholarship for a student who wants to go into law or have law enforcement at the high school. All right? So that'll go, your name will go on the list. And thank you again for all you've done.
Okay, folks, I'm gonna throw in my two cents. I've been here for just under 30 years, so Denise has been a police officer as long as I've been here in town, and I really appreciate being able to watch her go up from being just a patrolman to becoming our chief. I was pretty excited when we were able to appoint her to that position or confirm her to that position, and we definitely will miss you. As everybody has pointed out, Denise, we very much appreciated having you there with us. Your integrity, your humor, everything has been just wonderful for us, and I'm sure that your impact on the police force will be known and shown for a long time. So with that, I just wanna give you one last parting gift. From the Town Council and Town Staff, we wanna say thank you very much. So we're good. What? Oh, you wanna stay here? Okay. That's a good thing. So, sorry about that. Excuse me. Now, since we're all here gathered, what I'd like to do is move Item 2 on your new business up to this point in time, because I believe most of you are interested in the whole situation. Item 2 is Police Chief Position Confirmation, submitted by Town Manager Eileen Cabanel. The Town Council shall consider the confirmation of the appointment of a new Police Chief pursuant to Charter Article 7-8. And at this point, we've been presented, do you wanna talk to this, Eileen?
It's getting kinda dark and windy, but I think this is very important, obviously. So, I'm sure everybody must know already that we generally promote from within the Merrimack Police Department. There are often different departments of different municipalities where they bring people in from the outside because there may be issues or things aren't running well, and we have had the honor of promoting from within for quite some time now. Denise will be a very hard act to follow, but to her credit, and to the credit of all of you, people are moved along as they want to progress and as they want to move up in the system. There's so many different opportunities for them, whether it's patrol, or detectives, or, or any of those things. But, so, without further ado, it is my sincere pleasure to recommend to the Town Council that Deputy Chief Brian LeVek be confirmed as our next Police Chief. So Brian, would you come up, please? You're here. And if they don't confirm him, that will be kind of embarrassing, so.
Could be wearing the hat prematurely.
So, I'm gonna say a few words, and then I'm gonna let Denise, who is still the Chief, Brian, that... Oh, okay. Never mind. Okay?
So, we were, we were able to meet with Brian LeVek as a Council and non-public to be able to go over his resume, his background, his understanding of where he wants to take the police force, and where he sees the Town of Merrimack, and all of those things. So what I'd like right now would be a motion to confirm Brian.
I would like to move to confirm Brian LeVek as the new Police Chief.
Awesome. Motion by Nancy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter? We all had that discussion last night, so I'm gonna forego any discussion at this point and call for a vote. All those in favor of having Brian be confirmed as our next Police Chief, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Congratulations, Brian.
Okay, let me get my glasses on here. So Brian has been with us for over 20 years now. He started out in May of 1998 as a part-time special officer, became a full-time patrol officer in July of 2000, which means that you've been here for 20 years. So, the, some of the qualities that we really looked for in the Police Chief, as we always do, is a breadth of experience. Brian has been involved in just about every job in the, in the Police Department, and he has, which is, which is one of the things that you do really well, is to make sure that people are very well-rounded and they know a lot, excuse me, about all different aspects of the Police Department. Close your ears. He's very intelligent. And he, did you just mute that, Nick, over there? He recently graduated from the FBI Academy, which, as I said last night, I think only 2% of the applicants apply for, and he quickly reminded me it was 1%. Yes, you did. I have you on tape. So, it just goes, it goes to show, I'm so proud of the Merrimack Police Department. Under Brian's leadership, it will continue to be good and strong. What really amazes me in this time, in this day and age, where there's so much animosity and trouble between the police officers and, and the public for perceived issues that might be there, that doesn't happen here in Merrimack. And the reason why is because through the leadership of the Chief and the soon-to-be-Chief, and many others before them, as well as yourselves, you connect with the people. There's so many things that you do in the schools and with the elderly, and there's just so much caring and connecting with people, and I wish that everyone knew just how, how strong that is. I wish you had a chance to get to know them like, like we all do. So, I'm very proud of you, all of you, and I'm very proud of Brian, and couldn't be happier except if Denise stayed to announce him as your new Police Chief. Thank you.
Denise, did you wanna have a few words to tell us about Brian?
Ooh, I get to talk again. You know, Eileen covered the basics kind of of what Brian, you know, when he started, what he's done. He actually has done all that stuff, and... He actually has done all that stuff and much, much, much more that is behind the scenes. You know, Brian, for a long time, has been that person that I rely on to get things done, and he does it, and he does it well. And the, one of the reasons that made me feel comfortable to leave is because Brian is here to take over. And all of you need to know that you are in great hands. And I think with the command staff that, that you have, you need to know that every one of them, led by Brian, has your back and is willing to do anything they can to make sure you go home safe at night. So, you know, Brian, you're gonna do an amazing job. I could not be more proud than my last thing is to be able to say to you, congratulations. You certainly make me proud, like a little brother that I never had. And now I think we want to call Megan and Cole up.
Because it's tradition and all those good things, we're, we're gonna have a penning ceremony for Brian at this point, so when Megan gets up here, she can help us with that. How are you? Brian can help you with that. And Megan, we, we always realize how much the spouse at home has to put up with the amount of extra work that their, their spouse does, especially as chief, and we appreciate all the efforts and, and the support that you give to Brian so that he can support the town of Merrimack. So thank you very much for your support and help. We really appreciate it. You want to have a few words?
So now that I have all you here, I'm gonna do my five-year strategic plan real quick with you guys. Town manager Cabanel, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, and assistant town manager McCallie. I would like to thank you for allowing me to lead one of the greatest police departments around. I was born and raised in Merrimack, and twenty-two years ago, I started my career with this amazing department. I am incredibly proud of the daily actions of our officers and employees. We often receive kind words from citizens with whom our employees, our officers have interacted with, situations where they've gone above and beyond to help out a member of our community. These acknowledgements always make me feel proud of the work they do. However, it does not surprise me when I hear the compliments about our officers, because those are the types of officers that we strive to hire. Officers that are caring, honest, humble, and kind. We will continue to hire officers in the future that fit within the culture of the Merrimack Police Department to positively serve our community. To the men and women of the police department, I can assure you that we will continue to grow with the times in decrease training and our use of available technology. I want to make sure that you have the tools to keep you safe and successful at your jobs. True success, however, is going to require support from all facets of this department. Please watch out for each other every day and comfort each other after responding to tragic calls. We all work so closely together and often spend time with each other more than our own families. Be observant of each other and check in when something doesn't appear right. To the Merrimack community, although there'll be staff changes at the department, I can promise you that our continued commitment to the community will not waver. We will still embrace the citizens of Merrimack and be proactively involved in our community policing programs. We continue to be accountable and transparent and continue to grow with the times at the police department. We will still offer exceptional service, and we hope to soon begin most of our community programs again, and hopefully provide new programs to engage the youth of this town and other community members. To Chief Roy, thank you for your exceptional service to the police department over the last thirty years. I want to personally thank you for being a great leader, a mentor, and a friend over my career. Thank you for being instrumental in my acceptance of the National Academy. It is amazing that the entire command staff all began as patrol officers on the same squad. We were able to learn and grow with each other, have some fun times along the way. You will be missed. I would also like to thank my prior chiefs and supervisors that I have worked with to prepare me for this day. I was able to learn from each of you, and those lessons helped form the officer I am today. To my family, Mom, Dad, Michelle, thank you for all that you've done and always supported me becoming an officer. To my loving wife, Megan, thank you for your unwavering support, the sacrifices that you made for, for me in my career. Thank you for understanding when I get phone calls during the most inopportune times. I know that you are always there to listen when I need someone to talk to. I love you. Thanks, buddy. And to my son, Cole, keep thinking that blue lights are cool and just keep dancing even when there's no music playing, just like right now. Perfect. I want to, I'm looking forward to continue serving this great town for years to come, and thank you again, once again, for this opportunity. Thank you.
Brian, thank you very much for your willingness to step forward and take this position. Obviously, as Denise pointed out, she saw your boss for another week. The appointment is effective the fifteenth. It's gonna be tremendous working with you, and we look forward to it. Thank you, sir. Brian's gonna be with us for a long time, so there'll be plenty of time for people to talk. It's a little chilly out here, a little windy, and we're going a little bit long, so I'm gonna ask that we recess the town council meeting and, and for ten to fifteen minutes. We're gonna move back into the Matthew Thornton room. Thank you all very much for coming out and helping us to celebrate Denise's career at the, at the police department and for helping us to celebrate the appointment of Brian as the new chief. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna call the town meeting back to quarter from recess at seven twenty-four. Thank you very much for your patience, folks. If you didn't know, we were out at Abbey Griffin Park in the wind, the cold, and stuff like that. In the dark. But it was a special time. So let me get back in, let me find out what I did with my agenda. So we skipped over announcements. The upcoming general election will be held on Tuesday, November third, from seven a.m. to seven p.m. at your designated polling location. Please be advised that the James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School polling location has been moved up the street to the Merrimack High School for the general election only. So if you would normally vote at JMU's or the James Mastrocola Upper Elementary, we're gonna be moving you folks to the high school for this election. So just, we'll have plenty of signs pointing the way, but just to give you as much advance notice as possible, we want to let you know that that was the action we took last week at the recommendation of the town moderator, town clerk, and, and the council's decision. Our upcoming town council meeting's Thursday, October twenty-second, at seven p.m. is a regular meeting. And as a reminder, we normally meet on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month, but in the month of November and December, we'll be meeting on the first and third Thursdays of the month. So November fifth, at seven p.m. will be a regular meeting, and November nineteenth, at seven p.m. will be a regular meeting here. Eileen, did you have any other announcements?
Yes. The transfer station will be partnering again with Eversource this year to provide for a free, free-on day for Merrimack residents. On Saturday, October seventeenth, Merrimack residents may bring their unwanted residential air conditioners, dehumidifiers, freezers, and refrigerators to the transfer station, and Eversource will pick up the disposal costs. So that is Saturday, October seventeenth. Absentee ballots, very important. The town clerk's office strongly encourages persons wishing to vote by absentee ballot in November to submit their request for a ballot as soon as possible. An absentee ballot request form can be found on the town's website. Ballots are now available. All absentee ballot requests received to date have been fulfilled. Due to the number of inquiries being received, we wish to inform voters that the general election is the same as the presidential election. There will only be one ballot in November, and with all Republican and Democratic candidates. Party affiliation is not a factor in this election. Persons who are not registered to vote and wish to register and vote absentee should complete the absentee ballot request form. It serves as both a request for a ballot and a voter registration. Voter registration. The town clerk's office is open and accepting registration applications in person during our normal hours for those who wish to do so in person. In addition, the supervisor of the checklist will hold voter registration hours at town hall on the following dates and times. Tuesday, October twentieth, from six thirty to seven thirty p.m., and Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, from seven to eight p.m. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I had my mic off. If you're on the agenda for a later item, you can just talk to us then. But, but any other individuals that have comments that aren't already on the agenda, are welcome to come up forward now. Seeing none, we'll move on. We already did the recognitions and resignations and retirements. The recognition of retirement of Denise Roy was held at the gazebo in Abbey, Abbey Griffin Park. It was, it was a great, well-attended ceremony, and we really appreciate her many years with us and three as chief. That brings us to appointments. Our first appointment is with the annual review with the Agricultural Commission, submitted by Agricultural Commission Chair Bob McCabe for the town of Merrimack Charter, Section six dash six. At least annually, there should be an annual review with the Agricultural Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the town, the council should know or could act on. Bob, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You can, because you're far enough away from people, you can take your mask off while you're talking to us.
Thank you, it's okay. It'd be great. Thanks for having me. I'm a member of the council, a member of the town manager's office. We do an annual review of the ag commission. We opened the spring with our thirteenth year at the Merrimack Community Gardens. A tractor motor rotivator was used to till the soil. All of our commission members participated in staking, flagging, and marking of all the good, the garden plots. The garden was open by mid-May this year. The water was turned on. Many veteran gardeners returned to their safe garden plots, and I believe we rented half of the available garden plots this year, a lot of them to veteran gardeners, been with us many years. Plans to open the summer farmer's market were delayed until safety protocol was realized. The chairman attended the last live UNH Extension seminar at Brookdale Farm in Hollis mid-March of this year. At that point, all live classes were suspended for safety concerns. The Agriculture Commission being proactive, kept up with all the new safety training, webinars that UNH Extension offered, we knew it would be different, it would be a different farmer's market with the pandemic. With these trainings, we understood the new market setup and design. The extra safety concerns were in place, social distancing, mandatory masks, gloves, no sampling of product, and prepackaged for all the customers in purchasing. Money was also handled in a different way. Again, all of this was taught to us before the market was open. We were ready. It was a lot more work to set up and be safe. The vendors had to be trained on-site. The customers became more familiar week after week. Apparently, we in Merrimack were one of the safest markets. The Bedford Market had little use for masks and distancing. Nashua had no distancing, even with a program coordinator on-site every Sunday. This year, the market was set up on, on the right side of five twenty-six D W Highway, under the trees. The Amazon vans were parked in front of the building where we used to be, and rightly so, as they pay a heavier rent than we do. The summer market started with twelve vendors with a mix of farms, honey, wine, soap, and pain-relief vendors. The Census Bureau was also present for a few Wednesdays at our market. This year, with everyone being safe with the pandemic, here, I believe, we at the times had half the customers we normally would. I handed out masks every Wednesday to those that did not bring one. Most everyone complied. There were a few hardheads in denial, but overall, the whole market season was very safe. It now takes longer to set up the farmer's market with the extra safety concerns in place, as well as the breakdown at six o'clock every Wednesday evening. We set up for seventeen Wednesdays, mid-June through mid-October. Also, also this year, we found a scholarship student who had just graduated from the Merrimack High School system. The commission has interviewed her, and we all, we're all pleased with her potential. Her new school fall semester is New England College in Hennecker. Ultimately, as an ornithology major, upon graduation of her four-year program, she wishes to work with the New Hampshire Fishing Game Department. On a more somber note, we knew, you know, we lost Pete Gagnon this past year. At his wake, I spoke with Nancy and mentioned to her the ag commission would like to plant a tree in his memory, either at her new home or at a place the family decided would be best. Nancy got back to me and asked if we could plant a red delicious apple tree at Wasserman Park near the community garden. Pete was always fond of the community garden, every year contributed vegetable seedlings to be planted in the garden. Eventually, permission was secured to plant this tree. It took a while to find a specimen tree, and I searched many wholesale nurseries in the tri-state area and found a three-and-a-half-inch caliber red delicious apple at Millkins Nursery in Chichester, New Hampshire. In great shape, ten to twelve foot tall. We planted this tree on a Wednesday, mid-September of this year. The commission has been hand-watering it as, as, and will continue until the ground freezes solid by mid-November. It is planted in a field where the swimming pool and bathhouses used to be. We did this because here was a man who gave forty years of service to this town that he loved. Some of us remember that and miss him terribly. That's all I have, you guys. Questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the ag commission?
If you don't come out, it's maybe, it's a very nice and beautiful thing that you said about.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I think it's just true, the apple tree is perfect. And now we know Denise is back. It's really, it's really...
Nancy has just passed away, you know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely. So the next question we would have from the commission is, and I briefly talked about this with Paul, we would like to put the name at the base of the tree. Etched a piece of granite. I asked the council what they think about it, and it's your decision.
Have you done that with other trees, have you not?
I think so.
I'm not sure if it would be in a motion. I think that's very appropriate. There's no reason why that shouldn't be able to be done. It's not, like it hasn't been done before, and it's certainly appropriate. So I'm not sure if it can be in a motion, or you just go ahead and do that?
I don't, I don't see any objection from the council at this point.
I was, I was thinking along Council Harrenton's lines. I think that would be appropriate.
It won't be a vertical plaque. It'll be set in the edge of the circle of the tree, almost flush to the ground. We have, we have a company that would put the Gagnon name and granite.
You're gonna be flush the ground so we can mow grass over it?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't interfere with.
I was just thinking, maybe we can think about it.
I'm thinking two-inch letters, you know, diamond-cutting stone, but I can ask the stonekeeper and see what he says about that. Is that the vision of the council?
I think it would be an awesome tribute to the Gagnon family. We really appreciate all that they gave us. I worked with Pete for quite a while on the planning board and have known him since shortly after I moved to town back in 91. And he was a fantastic guy. I've worked with Nancy quite a bit as well and interacted with her, and I know they gave a lot to this town. They love this town. So, any tribute we can make would be awesome, and so I think that's an awesome idea.
Perhaps by looking at it, it might have something that they can suggest.
Do you have the granite already picked out or something?
Well, a piece of granite. We saw one piece, flat edge, and he would etch the name on top of that, and we'd, you know, cut it into the ring of the tree, the earthen ring, and bury it flush.
Yeah.
Let me work with that. It might be two stones, Pete and Nancy. I don't know. Because we're working in a circle, so we'll see what we can do. But it's not impossible. But I had to ask, just to be sure.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. We appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Anybody else have questions?
Just a comment. Thanks, Bob, for your hard work on the committee.
You're welcome, Peter.
Yeah, I'm sure it was quite the challenge this year, and I appreciate that you guys managed to step up to it. Barbara?
Yeah, I just want to say, I go to the farmer's market a lot, and it was seamless. I like the position over under the trees. It was very nice. But, you know, when people didn't have masks, whatever, it just seemed you were running it, and it was very seamless, and I don't think people really minded one way or the other, you know, going and having to do the protection. So, good job with that.
Thank you for that.
And you said you had about half the plot sold this year? That's usually, I thought, you usually sell out all your plots?
Normally, we'd have a better year. I think the pandemic set us back a little bit.
I suspect it did, yeah.
But when they did come out to the garden plots, they were safe there. There was sample spacing and all that. I think the same thing with the market. People were afraid to come out, go shopping.
Well, certainly early on, they were afraid to go out at all.
And then some of them didn't see us for a few weeks because we were in the trees, really. But Amazon seems to be gone now, and talking to Charlie Morgan, I believe we'll be out front again next year, full focus and all that, so.
Okay.
We hope for a better year next year.
Awesome. Well, that sounds great, and we appreciate the extra work you had to do this year for the pandemic. We hope it's beyond us next year.
Absolutely.
But it's good to let people know that the garden was available and plots are available. And because it's outside, because they're at least, what, 10 or 15 feet apart, it's easy to stay distanced from others and to encourage people to come out and use it if they have an interest in it.
It's hard work, but it's something that really inspires people.
Awesome. That's very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
You've all be safe.
Our next item on the agenda is an annual review with the Heritage Commission submitted by the Heritage Commission Co-Chair Ralph Gerins and Co-Chair Chip Pollard. Unfortunately, they were unable to make it tonight for various different reasons, so we're postponing that to next week's, next meeting of the Town Council and double up with someone else trying to get these annual reviews done that got delayed because of COVID-19, of all things. So, we're postponing number two. We have no public hearings tonight. We have legislative updates. You don't have any state reps in the audience. The Town Managers report.
Okay, yes. So, the library is delighted to welcome back their patrons for what they call pop-in and pickup services. The library building is open for browsing, computer usage, technical assistance, and notary services. All visitors should wear masks or face coverings, hand sanitize upon entering, and observe social distancing. Our programs will remain virtual, and meeting rooms are still closed to the public. Fines for overdue items remain suspended, and please visit the website at www.merrimacklibrary.org for details. Babusak Lake Road sewer construction update. The project is complete.
Yay!
Pending final test results and as-built survey drawings prior to formal acceptance. Kyle, fantastic job in oversight on this project. This has been quite the journey as well. Next one, Old Blood Road update, which kind of goes along with the same thing. The road construction project is complete. Utility work remains to be completed by the Consolidated Communications, so that the existing utility poles can be removed. Again, such a huge, long, you know, drawn-out, and so many questions as to, because the water table was so high and the pipes were so deep, and there were so many questions as to how much it would cost, but fortunately, it came in under budget and looks really great. So, again, Kyle, great work. The work on the removal of the toll plazas at Exit 11 ramp started today.
Yay!
So, I was going to call Dan Dwyer, because Dan Dwyer, who used to be on the council, said that they were going to spend like a half a million dollars on taking those up, and he said he could use some friends and bring some friends and beer and a sledgehammer, and he could take care of that in a weekend. So, he doesn't need to do that now. So, the project will remove the toll plaza canopies, structural supports, toll booths, and concrete islands, repair the concrete roadway slabs, including placing a paved surface. Some work will require that the ramps will be closed, which can only occur on Saturdays per the contract, and only one ramp at a time. New Hampshire DOT and their contractor will provide advance notice for the ramp closures so that we can share information through our website and various social media accounts. So, this is, we celebrated when they brought the tolls to zero, and this really kind of puts paid to it, because now the toll, the actual structures are removed, and we really got rid of one toll.
Any chance we can get one of those toll signs we can hang somewhere here as part of our history?
Love it. Love it, yes.
With all the things that have happened, we now know the things do matter.
And it snows in July and all that good stuff, yeah.
So, if you don't mind, Kyle, how are we doing on that fence? Somebody told me you were putting up the fence at Watson Park. Is that so?
Bids were received on the fence by the Finance Department on Wednesday. I'm in the process of reviewing bids to make a recommendation to Finance on which contractor we should select.
Okay. What's really funny about that is somebody came up to me and told me, "They're putting up the fence right now, and it must be black because you can't even see it."
We did a great job, didn't we?
That's all I have.
Okay.
That project is due to be finished by November 30th, not November 19.
Does anybody have questions for Eileen on her Town Manager's report? So, Eileen, you mentioned that there's still one section of the sewer project that needs to be inspected? Is that, I thought we said that about a week or two ago, that there was one more section. Is it still out for inspection?
Which are you talking about? The Old Blood Road one?
No, the sewer project. Madeline Bennett.
That is a sewer. That's the one. Oh, the sewer project. The project is complete pending final test surveys and as-built survey drawings prior to formal acceptance of the sewer.
Okay, so we did get all the different sections inspected and approved?
Everything's been inspected. We don't have the inspection results for everything. The video inspection has to occur 30 days after the backfill has been placed over the pipe, just to make sure there's no sediment settling in the meantime. The videos have been taken by the subcontractor. Contractor does not have the videos yet and has not sent them to us yet. And then, we're also waiting for the survey company to complete the as-built drawing to make sure that the invert elevations of each of the pipes is correct, but we have full confidence that it will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's fully paved now, or we're still waiting for a top coat?
Yeah, it's done. We striped it yesterday. Looks great.
Okay. Good. And it came in under budget?
It did, yeah, significantly. I don't have the final numbers. We should get the final numbers with the October billing, which will be at the end of the month.
Now, did that also include some work along Madeline Bennett Road? There was one small stretch on Madeline Bennett that needed?
Yeah, that was completed as well. That was a section that they had to, it was right in the middle of the separated yellow line from the two travel lanes, about a 40-foot, 60-foot section, I'm sorry, that they had to dig up and take the belly out of the pipe, and that's all repaved and done as well.
Awesome.
Yep.
That's great. So, I presume you're going to bring an acceptance of that to our sewer system at some time in the future, or have we done that already by default?
Yeah, I don't think this sewer needs to come to you guys for acceptance, but certainly Madeline Bennett Lane will come to the council for acceptance.
Okay. Great. Thank you. No other questions? Yeah, the fence project. So, that brings us to a consent agenda, which we don't have tonight. Under Old Business, we have selection of a recycling contract. If you guys don't mind, can I pull up the New Business number one to this time, and we'll just swap the two? So, under New Business, Memorial Bench at Watson Park submitted by Sharon Bellmore. The Town Council to consider request to place a granite memorial bench in memory of Richard E. Bellmore under the third tree on the left and straight on till morning of the park facing the street at Watson Park. So, if you want to come forward and tell us what's going on, we appreciate it. You can come up here and have a seat.
Make sure the mic's turned on.
Hi, my name is Sharon Bellmore. My husband grew up in Merrimack his whole life. In fact, his family still lives here. He grew up here when his home was a farm and loved this town. And when we married, he said we had to buy a house, and it had to be in Merrimack, because that's where he went to school, that's where he grew up. All his friends are here in town. He knew then everybody on Town Council. His family is very well-known in this town. I can't tell you enough how much this man gave to this town and how much he loved it. And his favorite place was Watson Park. He loved Watson Park, respected it, went there and picked up trash from other people that came on a regular basis. I just would like to place a very, a four-feet granite bench that is already being made by Swenson Granite Works in memory of his name from his birth to his death, from me. He is already buried across the street from Our Lady of Mercy Church, but it would mean everything to me and his family, who still all live here in Merrimack. We all do and love it very much if it was granted. And I'd like to place it under the third tree on the left facing the street. He'd just like to sit up there. He used to tell me, "We're going," and we'd be sitting there for hours on end. And that's all his children know, that's all his grandchildren know, and I really would like to place the bench there. I already have purchased the bench. I have someone to put it in, that's a professional that will put it in, and they were, told me from Swenson, they're the ones that recommended the person to put it in once the bench is finished.
Right.
So, that's what I'm requesting.
Very good. Can you, I mean, third tree on the left, can you give me a better idea?
Can I give you a better?
Is that up by the street?
Yes, well, if you go down, down west of the highway, it is literally across the street from the fire department.
Okay.
It would be the third tree there, and it's a very tasteful bench. It's only four feet.
Right.
Nothing big or gaudy.
Now, the sidewalk loops away from the street in that area?
It would be.
Or does it go behind the bench, or the bench going to be on the other side of the sidewalk?
On the other side, like on the other side of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Where it wouldn't interrupt any walk flow or anything like that.
Well, yeah, no, I understand. There's quite a distance there between the street and the sidewalk, at least at one point.
Right, there is now, too.
Okay.
And I sent him pictures.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't.
It's hard to tell.
I couldn't tell exactly where with that, I mean, it's a nice tree, but it's going to be up on the rise. It's not going to be down in the park.
Correct.
Okay. Because Mr. Watson, when he donated, it wanted very much to be a place where kids could go and play ball or play catch or do something.
That would never change.
Anybody accidentally bumping into a granite bench.
They wouldn't.
I mean, the stitches from that would really look bad on the front page of the news.
Yeah.
So, that's.
It's nowhere near anything, any activities.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments?
I don't think so.
Finley?
It is. I just, it would mean so much to him. It means so much to me and his family.
Okay, thanks. Finley?
The Bellmore family, as I recall, had a business in town for years.
Yes, they had, yes.
And I didn't know the family well, but I knew Ricky Bellmore.
Yes.
For a long time.
Lon?
Yeah, just a suggestion. Perhaps if the council is in agreement, we could suggest you coordinate with DPW and the parks people for placement?
Yeah.
Okay, I will. Great, thank you.
Anybody else? So, Finley?
I just need a little clarity on the location. I think I know what we're talking about, but I've done the satellite view to see trees, and are we talking south of the entrance on the front where the sidewalk wraps in? Is that what we said?
Yeah, facing the fire department, so between the entrance and the bridge.
All right. No, thank you very much.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Peter?
And I totally support this. Thank you, Sharon. I think that's wonderful. I think it's only going to beautify the park. Just something for the council to think about. I know when we were discussing Watson Park, we saw some pictures of their master plan that's come out, and I know that there was a walkway and so forth that they proposed and maybe will someday happen in the future, but when we have generous folks like the Bellmores who want to donate a granite bench or something, I could see other families want to do that, maybe we should sort of have a layout of locations where we, you know, that kind of fall in line with the master plan that we could suggest to these folks moving forward, you know? Just only because I saw that plan that was originally by the committee, and just a thought.
That's a great idea, and one of the other thoughts that came up as we were discussing this was we have a policy for naming things, like this room and stuff like that, and bring a committee together to help us name them. Placing benches is a great idea, but if we get 100 people want to come place benches, we're going to run out of space in town. So, I think what we want to do is revisit that policy and review, you know, what kind of criteria should be taken into account and things of that nature in the future, not in this situation, but from now on, just to kind of reminded us that we've got a lot of benches out at Abbey Griffin Park.
But from now on, just to kinda reminded us that we've got a lot of benches out at Abbey Griffin Park along the outside edge there and, and that's great. But we're running out of space there as well and we can't fill up the whole park with granite benches as much as we'd love to. And as much as people, as we talked about tonight with the chief and the new chief, uh, how much people are enjoying Merrimack and have grown up here and stuff like that. We're happy to know that our new chief was born and raised here in Merrimack. So he's got Merrimack in heart as well. So I, i- if it's okay with the council, we'll kind of revisit that, that policy for any future situations. Normally, I mean, we wouldn't just throw benches everywhere and we appreciate what you're asking for. Uh, we certainly understand where that's coming from and, uh, appreciate you coming to talk to us. So if, if, uh, you wanna make a motion, Barb or somebody? You were asking.
I know. No, I can't think of what to say.
Well, just move to accept?
Move to accept the placement of a granite memorial bench in memory of Richard E. Bellmore, uh, at the designated spot in Watson Park.
And Mrs., and Mrs. Bellmore to coordinate with the town manager's office so that logistics are handled correctly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There you go. Moved by Barbara and seconded by Nancy with Bill's help. We appreciate that.
And Mrs. Bellmore, thank you for your generosity and, and memorializing your husband. I think it's a wonderful gift to the community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Pass is seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So at this point, we'll go back to, uh, old business number one, which, when I find my agenda, is a selection of a recycling contract. Submitted by the public works director Kyle Fox. The current single-stream recycling contract through the NARA between the town of Merrimack and E.L. Harvey and Sons, Inc., is expiring November thirtieth of 2020. The town received proposals from two companies for the upcoming years, year or years, and Public Works is recommending to accept the proposal from E.L. Harvey, which is our current vendor for the next twelve-month period. And Chris Perro from the Solid Waste Foreman is here to talk to us about it along with Kyle.
Thank you, Chairman Kennedy. I would introduce the topic. Chris has been doing a quick presentation for us to bring it around to speed, both here and at home. There we are with our recycling program and the challenges we've been facing. And then we can be happy to open it up for the questions following.
Okay.
I'll do the brief intro.
All right, thanks.
As you know, um, probably eight months or so ago, we had somebody from NARA who is the company that, um, is basically the, the, the company that goes out and goes to bid for, um, different municipalities for recycling. And, um, they came in and told us about the trends in recycling and, um, very, we're very disappointed to hear, although we were kind of aware that recycling, um, recyclables or getting rid of recyclables at this moment in time is very expensive. It used to be that we actually, they paid us a little bit of money to take recyclable materials and now, um, we are paying, um, a significant amount. During the conversa, during the course of that conversation, there was also a silver lining there in, in terms of hope because I think we all, people wanna recycle there. You know, there's a, it's, we, we talked about this before. It's like, um, you know, I need to worry about my carbon footprint. Well, you know what? I'm gonna recycle. That's easy enough and I'll just at least, I'll at least do that. And people like to, people get pretty, um, caught up with recycling. So, um, my granddaughter is all over me. That's why I always say you should go to the schools. We weren't able to get them in the schools, but anyway. So, um, so the, the cost has gone from, um, from giving us money to paying, I think this year we, this year that we're in until the end of the month, we were paying fifty-seven dollars a mon, a ton for our recyclables. Is that right, Chris? Yeah. So, um, so now we have to, we're using the same vendor. We went to the same vendor to talk about it. We also talked to Waste Management. And the difference in, in, um, collective costs, meaning the rental of the, um, what do you call it? Trash receptacles and transportation. Because our, our, as you know, our trans, our recycling contract was actually so great that they just took the stuff and left with it. We never saw it again. In this case, they don't do that anymore. Not only do you have to pay for the, um, tonnage, you also have to pay for the, their receptacle and you also have to pay to transport it. So all those things together puts, puts it into a, um, much, much more costly thing. The, the recommendation that we're gonna make is to, um, continue with recycling, obviously. I don't believe it's a thing of the past. There has been talk since, um, fairly regular talk about, um, perhaps, um, different entrepreneurs in other parts of the, of the country that might like to get into the recycling business and, and, uh, you know, selling off of those materials. Because as it stands right now, most of it goes to China and, um, they are, we're not doing so well with China right now. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to say. I wanted to just tell you that this, um, hopefully this is just a stopgap measure, but it'd be nice to, so we're just gonna recommend a year and see what happens with that, uh, see if, if things change within the, the United States. And, um, so we can be ready to move to something that is stateside. So, thank you, sorry.
So is my fee redundant? Again, I'm gonna provide some background information. I feel a little redundant. I'm trying to refresh my memory. Like we mentioned, the current contract expires the end of November, November thirtieth. This would be a very favorable contract. We currently pay fifty-seven fifty per ton. And this fee includes everything, our tipping fees, our trucking, as well as rental maintenance of the contract.
Can you, can you pull your mic a little closer 'cause, make sure that it's on. Do you have a bright green light? There you go.
There we go. Sorry, my apologies. Uh, so again, some background information, uh, like many larger communities, Merrimack uses a single-stream, zero-sort recycling. Uh, this has been very attractive. It's simplistic, lower processing cost and ease of use for residents. Uh, beginning in May of 2010, when the town first started single-stream, we've done over fourteen thousand tons of single-stream material. An average cost of fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents per ton. Uh, over the past five years, we've had an average of one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven tons per year. I'm gonna use this figure later in our projections.
Is that number going up or down or staying pretty flat?
It's been actually pretty steady, right along the lines.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, a little bit of a background. There's a glut of certain recyclables in the world market today. Uh, in 2017, China, who is the world leader of importing recycled materials for its own manufacturing, is no longer accepting a lot of these contamination levels in, or zero-sort material. Uh, in January of 2018, China nearly banned all imports. And this national sort, as they call it, is the latest and strictest regulation on all solid waste imports. On a local level, these markets are essentially closed off of mixed plastics and papers. For example, the average price of mixed paper in the Northeast has dropped from a high of eighty-five dollars per ton in March of 2017 to below zero today. Fortunately, some communities like Merrimack has been protected from these dwindling markets to our ongoing contracts. And again, I can't stress, this is about to change at the end of November. Uh, since 2017, the area average of single-stream recycling has gone from a tipping fee of forty dollars and twenty-two cents to seventy-five dollars today. Uh, thankfully, with our contract, our cost has only gone up four dollars per ton. And please keep in mind, this includes all outside costs, the tipping fees, the transportation and all rentals and maintenance. So going forward, there are only a few options available to us. The three we saw were Casella Waste Systems, E.L. Harvey and Waste Management. Unfortunately, Casella Waste has yet to respond to any of our correspondence. So we're left with E.L. Harvey's. They presented us with the following rate schedule. The tipping fee of ninety-five dollars per ton, a haul charge of two hundred and seventy-five dollars per haul, an equipment rental fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. But please note, the haul charge includes the ability to haul two containers at a time and the equipment rental fee includes the compactor as well as seven boxes and no additional charge. This is gonna come into play later, as you'll see in the projection. Sorry, sir.
While you're on it, Chris, how many tons are in a haul, I guess?
We average around six thousand, excuse me, six thousand pounds per, per box. And you wrap two boxes at a time currently. You're welcome. So if I take those fees and project it out with that same one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven tons, we come up with an annual cost of one hundred eighty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. And this breaks down to a hundred and twenty-four dollars per ton. Now, if you look at the numbers presented by Waste Management, their tipping fee is only eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. But this is based on a blended value. This again will come into play a little later. Where their haul charge is two hundred and sixty dollars per haul and their equipment rental fee is three hundred and fifty dollars per month. But again, two important things to note. Their equipment rental is only including the compactor itself and three boxes. And also their haul charge is for a single box at a time. They don't have the same abilities as Harvey to haul two boxes. So if you use their numbers in our projection, we come up to an annual cost of two hundred and twelve, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Which comes down to roughly a hundred and forty-four dollars per ton. You can see how the impact of a single haul in the equipment, in equipment rental really comes into play here. So some further considerations. It's important to keep in mind that their tipping fees are, are based on what they call is a blended value. This blended value is a total weight value per ton of each recyclable and non-recyclable component. This, this also includes any negatively valued recyclables as well as any contaminants that are in that, in that blend. Uh, so we'd be subjected to composition audits and we'd be kind of stuck with the volatile markets. We'd be subjected to those fluctuating markets going forward. So in terms of comparison, we reached out to a local town that's similar in size and program. Uh, the biggest difference is that they own their two compactors as well as four boxes. So they're required to maintain and keep the upkeep on these materials. And also they separate their glass from their co-mingle recycling. So there's an extra level of, of service required by their employees. So for an example of their expenses, we looked at their glass recycling, which comes out to roughly fifty-six dollars and eighty-two cents per ton. And their co-mingle comes on to a hundred and thirteen dollars per ton. So we take an average of these two, we come up with an average of ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. This actually falls right in line with what we've been projected for our, our tipping fees. So without the additional work and aggravation of separating the glass, this would, you know, require us some retooling at the transfer station as well as requiring the public to alter their already good habits for recycling. Um, and simply the space is required to collect the glass on site. I, I don't know if we have it. So that being said, our recommendation that it makes both financial and operational sense to continue our long-term standing relationship with E.L. Harvey and Sons. They provide exceptional service for many, many years and they're very responsive to our needs at the transfer station. Anywhere from an extra swap to emergency repairs, they've, they've come through every time. And I also think there's an inherent value of a firm tipping fee. This simplifies budgeting and avoids that overly complicated and subjective blended value that we'd be subjected to with Waste Management. And frankly, the level of service necessary to maintain only three boxes on site at our transfer station is unrealistic. Um, we typically go through three or four boxes on a given Saturday, never mind ramping up for the weekend. So I firmly believe we should stay, stay the course and stick with E.L. Harvey's and Sons. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions? Peter, sure.
Thanks. Great presentation, Chris.
Thank you.
I guess if we went away completely from recycling, just said, "We're gonna do trash."
Mm-hmm.
What does it cost us?
It's very close to the rates projected by Harvey's and I think there's a value in that going green door. Costs per ton to get rid of our trash right now is a hundred and thirty-three dollars.
And if we said instead of single-stream, we wanted to do, we separate plastic, everything, you know, like we used to do. Does that save us any money?
It doesn't. We touched on that in our earlier presentation. The markets have just fallen right out of these. And it's, it's unfortunately, it's the way of the past.
Yeah, the fact, the fact, Peter, is, uh, you recall our old program when we did separate, um, we had our own compactors, um, we had to buy all the baling wire and all the materials necessary to that. Plus, we had an, an additional recycling attendant. Uh, so by going to single-stream, we were able to eliminate a, a full position. Uh, so that cost would have to be factored in as well.
Plus retooling for the extra space requirements and, and all those things. So it'd be quite a bit. Plus retraining everybody to separate out all their recyclables. I mean, we talked even last time about maybe going to just glass, uh, separate it out. And that would be a lot easier, but it would still, as you alluded to, Chris, it would still create an issue with creating a space for it and-
Exactly.
Um, and, and training people to now separate it out and, because you wouldn't want the glass in there with the regulars and all that stuff, so.
And as Eileen mentioned, there's, there's a lot of people that want to recycle. Um, I think there would be a pretty, pretty fair amount of criticism if we, if we moved to that.
If we stopped recycling altogether?
Well, no, or if we even stopped recycling glass. Uh, because then the glass would go to the waste stream and, and I think, I think there'd be some people upset with that model.
Yeah.
It's just amazing that, you know, moving forward, you thought, "Oh, recycling will never go away," and we'll, but it's amazing where we're at.
Yeah. Only, only nine dollars difference between throwing in the stream and, and recycling. But it's still better for the, for the ecology, if you will.
And I agree.
To do it and-
Yeah, I agree.
So at, at least, as you alluded to that, or Eileen did, it, this is hopefully a temporary situation and things are gonna swing as, as other vendors get involved with recycling and, or other manufacturers or whatever. I mean, somebody's gonna come up and, and figure out how to make money out of this stuff at a hundred dollars a ton. But, uh, Barbara, you had questions?
Yeah. What does E.L. Harvey do with the recyclables? They, they collect? Where do they send them?
They're, they're based in Massachusetts, so it's just a larger transfer station. So they, they do the same thing. They sort it.
They sort and then what do they do with it?
So, uh, I'll send you a video, uh, from their website.
Okay. Oh, I can just go to their website and watch it?
Uh, I'll send you the link. Uh, Steve and I took a tour there a couple of years ago and it is the most unbelievable facility, um, you could imagine. Um, E.L. Harvey is a company, of course, we've been with them for six years now. But as a company, they've been recycling for decades. They started as a little mom and pop thing and grown into what they have now. They have gigantic, multi-million dollar machines that separate all of the, the co-mangled recycles. They have workers on the line as well that, that do the, the pulling out of materials that the machines themselves can't cover. And they, so they separate all of the different materials into their individual commodities and then they market those commodities to, uh, to folks who can use them. They're, they're, it's an unbelievable operation.
I, in my past, I had helped start two towns with their recycling program and that, that was easier in those days because we actually had companies here in the United States that would actually buy those recyclables and use them, uh, like number one, plastics becoming t-shirts and things like that. My concern is that with the story with China, everything gets shipped over there. China refuses it. It gets shipped back to the United States and ends up in a landfill. So I don't want us to be in a position where E.L. Harvey, we're paying E.L. Harvey to pull the recyclables and they end up in a landfill.
Yeah, and that's not happening.
That's why I'm asking, where do they put it? What do they do with it?
There was a PBS Frontline, um, episode earlier this year on that topic and it was really eye-opening, uh, the amount of recycling that's being done. But just after it's recycled by, by the citizens, it's just being turned right into a landfill. With Harvey, that is not happening.
Okay, Finley?
Thanks, Tom. Kyle, did you not say when we heard this presentation about what was coming up? Did some towns use their glass for something? I don't recall what it was. They said they take it out and they, I don't know if it was in paving or whatever.
So, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of efforts in, in that. So, yeah, so there's a lot of efforts in that venture. The DOT allows a certain component of glass to be mixed with asphalt pavements. There's also some thought to use it as a mixture and road base. Thus far, it really hasn't taken off, but that is one of those avenues that may present a market going forward. For New Hampshire, towns have a hard time driving that kind of commodity. If DOT became more active in specking in their projects, the use of glass as an aggregate admixture with the quantities of work they do in their projects, then that might gain some traction. Harvey, for one, where Public Works, we took a tour of there when we were looking at the highway garage. A lot of facilities that separate their glass out, they just have mountains of it. There just isn't a market yet. There's a lot of hope for it. It's not there yet.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if some we would be able to utilize our little small segment, but I couldn't recall exactly what it was.
Yeah, and I believe it's Keene actually has a glass crusher. They do offer the service. You can bring your glass to them, they'll crush it, but it's very expensive to do. And we, Chris and I, had actually talked about the economics of getting a crusher for ourselves and bringing material in from other towns and trying to generate a revenue source. We couldn't convince ourselves that it made sense to get into that business, but it's something we'll keep looking into.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I appreciate your inputs, and I concur with the thought that I've been hearing that we should continue with recycling. It pains me that there's only a $9 difference, that we're paying that much to get rid of things that we've put that much energy into being able to recycle. And, you know, I've got several bins in my garage that I recycle into and then get them out to the transfer station once a month or something like that. But we'll continue doing it whether it goes in the landfill or not, just because it's the appropriate thing for us to be prepared for, because it will come back. I mean, there's no way we can continue to create the amount of trash we create and find somewhere to bury it, or burn it, or do whatever with it. So I think it behooves us to keep going with the program as long as it's not costing us extra to do so. And that $9 delta is still a $9 delta for 1,400 tons or whatever. So what's the will of the council at this point?
We need to make a motion to accept a proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
While we have the makeup motion.
Okay.
I would like to recommend acceptance of the proposal from E.L. Harvey for the next 12-month period for the recycling.
Second.
Is there any other, anything else we need to add to that, Paul?
Yeah. Also, to increase the commercial recycling tipping fee to the $123 a ton. $124.01 per ton for the commercial haulers who come in and dump their recyclables.
$1.01? What are we charging them now?
We charge them the $55, whatever our fee was.
Our fee was. It was just a pass-through.
It was a pass-through, but this is a big increase.
This is a big increase. Okay.
So we need to approve the motion, the cost being $124 a ton?
I think $125.
Wow, thank you. For a commercial recycling fees. Okay. Do we need to approve, authorize a town manager to sign any contracts or anything as necessary? That's okay with the motion, or and the second? Who seconded it? You, Barbara?
Lon.
Lon did. I'm sorry. Thank you, Lon. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the contract with E.L. Harvey and increase the tipping fee we charge commercial recycling folks at our transfer station to the $125 a ton. Any other questions or comments? Barbara?
So this is only good for a year.
Correct.
What do you guys see happening in a year when we're sitting down here doing this again? I mean, is there value in locking in this price for three years versus seeing what the market does in a year, and it may be substantially worse?
I don't believe we have that option, but.
I can answer that.
Oh, they didn't give us that option. Bless their hearts.
They probably took a lot of pain in this last five-year contract.
They did. The proposals we received, Waste actually did give us a three-year proposal. Harvey gave us a one-year proposal. I spoke with the owner, asking if a three-year deal would be possible, because that's what we had, was we're on our second three-year contract, and he said, "With the volatility of the market, he just couldn't take the risk." So I think the best course for both them and for us is to take it year by year at this point. And I do believe, as Counselor Koenig said, there's a lot of smart people in this country, and $100 a ton, somebody's going to smart their way out of this problem.
Paul, you had something to add?
Yeah, the other thing is for the council to remember is that our tipping contract for our disposal, from our tipping floor contract, ends in December of '22. So there's an opportunity back then, by doing these one-year deals, to bundle both the recycling and the tipping with some of these companies, and maybe get a better deal on both avenues. So for doing it for now, for one year at a time, makes a lot more sense. So.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? There we go. Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, before the director leaves, can I speak to, tonight we came up, Kyle, Eileen brought up the fact that the Madeline Bennett project came in under budget. And, you know, it's funny, I think about this and how lucky we've been, because you and your staff have overseen these projects. We had Bedford Road that completed this year, and now this project, which I remember the first time through, it's no easy undertaking. And I just want to say, I appreciate you and your staff's efforts. And over the years, we've watched the Bean Road Bridge go up, all these different bridges, McGaw Bridge. You guys, you have done a fantastic job. And, you know, I just was sitting here thinking about that, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'll pass that along to
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, especially with all the history we've had with Babuza Lake and also Bean Road, that both of those projects are good to have behind us.
Definitely.
Thank you for finding old jobs, surely.
That's right.
Yeah, because that's what it felt like it was going to happen when pigs fly.
I mean, they've been in the process for so long. We've talked about some of them for so long, including the total. But all of those things, the various projects and all seems to be culminating. It's one good thing about 2020, it's probably another thing, right?
So far.
Projects are coming to fruition and to provision, and I agree with Peter. Congratulations as well.
Thank you. We have a great team, and we get great support, both from Paul and Eileen and from you guys, frankly. It's been a great partnership, and that's how things get done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and hopefully the folks out on Old Blood
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate having a paved road.
Next spring, they'll appreciate it.
I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the acceptance of minutes. We have a minutes from September 24th of Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of 2020, of September 24th?
Second.
Moved by Nancy, seconded by Barbara. Do you have any adjustments or anything anybody wants to say? No? Go ahead.
I only have one.
Only one? I know, I know. I've got more than that.
Page seven, line 35, it says football slash cheer. There should be no slash. Cheer is its own program. It's not combined. So it should be comma, not a slash.
Actually, it is a
It is a combined program.
Is it combined? That's not the way they presented it, but I stand corrected.
Football and spirit. Actually, it's football and spirit. That I call that
Oh, is it?
Football and spirit now, combined program.
Okay.
Okay.
Make it spirit.
They changed it to spirit.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else? My turn?
Yes.
Okay, on page two, line 25, it talks about Merrimack, and then it's got TV dot and com in capitals. It ought to be all lowercase Merrimack TV period com, because it's a URL, not a dot com, so to speak. Did you get that? I mean, you see, okay.
Yeah.
On page seven, on line 25, it says, "Mr. Calabro utilized a PowerPoint presentation," and it was a PowerPoint presentation that he gave us, not just a PowerPoint. It was powerful, but it was, anyway. And then on line, on page 10, I had a question. The motion made by Counselor Healy and seconded by Chairman, by Chair Boyd, to reopen Wildcat Falls Conservation Area in Watson Park effective immediately. I thought that we had included in that motion a requirement that we move the orange fence to the side of the river where the new fence would be, which is not mentioned here, and it was never done. So I was trying to get a better understanding of where we were at. Either I forgot, or
I don't remember that part. I believe you, but I don't remember it.
No, I think we decided not to.
We discussed it, but
Not to move the orange fence?
No, because if I remember correctly, at that point, it was just reopen the parks. The recommendation from staff was to move the fence, but during, when they made the motion, the motion was just to reopen the parks.
I wasn't there, but I would assume that it would just be more unsightly. There'd be no reason for, to move it back there, particularly how late it is in the season.
And maybe at this point, that makes a lot of sense.
What is all that business?
I thought that I added those terms to the motion that it would have, it would move, because the idea was to continue to tell people the river access was unavailable and to show them where the fence was going to be. So when we were there the other day with Congressman Pappas, it kind of surprised me that there was nothing you could walk down there. But I guess I can review that meeting and just see if I had said that or not. I sure thought I did. Barbara?
Yeah, because when they opened the park, and I went down to look at the park, I was surprised not to see the fence moved down to the embankment line. So, and then I read this, and I said, "Well, maybe I"
Maybe we didn't.
Was incorrect. I would have to go back and listen to the whole conversation again.
My memory is that. It was not part of the motion, but I might be incorrect. The only way to clarify is to revisit the video of the trial.
And we can do that.
Okay.
Do that tomorrow.
If you would. I just thought that I had added that, and nobody had disagreed with adding that verbiage in there. But at this point, I guess it's somewhat moot. I don't know that I would drag it out of storage and put it up down there.
Yeah.
But I was just, I was surprised when I read through the minutes and saw it. Anyway, that's all I had to offer. If there's nobody else with suggestions, we can move the minutes as corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7-0-0. Bringing us to comments from the press and/or the public and the council. Peter?
Okay, for the sake of angering my fellow counselors, the fence, the fence at Watson Park.
Yeah.
And hearing Paul and Eileen say, "We won't get that fence up till November," I think our concerns for the fence with the weather coming in are no longer a concern. And I'm wondering if we want to talk about this on a later date to revisit waiting until the spring at this point, to see if we have issues down there, similar issues, or was this pandemic related? So that's my only purpose, is not to hash it all out, but say, is it worth a conversation before that fence actually goes up in November?
Are you wanting to reconsider the motion to put the fence there, or?
Well, kind of like Curry Road, we didn't put up the residence-only parking signs because we were past it. Clearly, we're past, we haven't had an issue since we've reopened Watson Park, and I didn't want to. I voted against it. And so now I'm looking at it, saying, do I want to, do we need to throw up the fence in a hurry? It would appear that this concern, this threat, is no longer a concern at the moment, to see how things shape up when the warmer weather comes back in the spring, you know, or early summer. So I would be interested to see what happens, because I wasn't a huge fan of the fence, but I felt the need at this time was compelling based upon what I heard from the police department. And if it, I would support the fence again if I saw in the spring that we had similar issues arising, so.
It's up to the council, I guess. I am against the fence and would prefer not to spend the money to put it up at this point. I know Congressman Pappas is trying to chase down any avenues possible to try and unhook us from that LWCF grant.
There's a lot.
And good luck is what everybody's always told us, but nobody's ever asked the guy at the top who has to improve it. And so my understanding was, he was thinking or considering sending a letter to the parks and whoever is responsible, and at least seeing from a congressman's level if there's any position that they might consider when you're talking about a $20,000 grant controlling a million-dollar piece of property. So I would prefer to hold off so that we can chase down any of those opportunities. And yeah, maybe it's a pipe dream, but it would be sad to have the fence up there and then suddenly realize that maybe there is a chance, in my perspective. But it's up to the council to decide whether we want to revisit that idea, either at tonight or at a different council meeting under an agenda item, or to reconsider the vote to put up the fence in the first place. Nancy?
Procedurally, I don't think Oops. Procedurally, I don't think that you can reconsider. It has to be either at the same meeting or the following meeting. So from a, I'm just saying from a procedural perspective, so it would probably be best, if you wanted to do that, to put it on another agenda.
Bring it up as a new agenda item.
Yeah.
Can I vote? Can I discuss why it should not be put on the agenda? I guess not. For those who voted against it, I don't think this is going to change anything. It's you were against a thing, you're going to be against it now. So, and I will just respond to Pete's suggestion. I understand your perspective, but that was considered when we first talked about it. Things that we had discussed have not changed. The reason it was voted upon was because of the belief that historically, it has happened basically two and a half summers now, and I believe it was the majority of the council that believed the odds are it was going to continue again next year because of the history, not just this past summer, but from the summer before as well. And I don't think, I think it's just delaying the inevitable, in my opinion. I understand what you're saying, but it's like, well, it's not active now. It's not active now, so let's
Can you bring Michael Littleclos?
She's hot.
I know.
It's not active.
He's not hearing it.
So, you know, let's just wait. I'm not a believer in just waiting for it to go. We decided. Nothing has changed since the time we made the decision, essentially. Feelings might change.
But the facts upon which we made the decision haven't changed. That's all. Finley?
I don't want to speak for Pete, and like Tom Koenig, I have been opposed to doing the fence. I never want it to be like Keene when they cancel their punk and festival because some terrible people came in and created havoc. You have to deal with that havoc. You can't allow your community to be run by a bunch of whatever. But I don't want to get back down that road again, because it makes me angry every time I think about it. But what has potentially changed, hasn't changed yet, but we have the potential
it. But what has potentially changed, hasn't changed yet, but we have the potential of an ear from somebody in Congress who's willing to talk to people. And if that never changes, then your point stays, that nothing's changed as far as the majority's belief that this will happen again. So.
Is your mic on?
It is.
Okay, you have to speak to it instead of to us.
Oh, sorry.
Or move it a little bit.
That's what happens when you sit in a bad chair. So anyhow, that's, you know, I feel awkward speaking about it because I have been opposed to it from the beginning, but I, your point of no change, I think there is a little bit of a change in what we knew when we did take the vote.
I, yeah, I mean, I think if there's a chance we could do it, I'd rather, I don't think it harms us dramatically to delay until spring. If there's a chance something could happen over the wintertime to change our arrangements with the park and then give us the option to maybe put in a fence and gate it and allow Merrimack residents or do whatever, you know, to, to control that and keep that option and opportunity available. But.
I know this is not the intent, honestly, but I just feel like, and I really mean this, I don't want to be taken the wrong way, but I think it's, I'm perceiving it as an excuse to delay. Because I really don't think, with all good intentions, I don't think Mr. Pappas is going to be able to do anything about it. So we're gonna wait. So come spring, we're gonna have to have anguish over this again. So are we gonna put up the fence? And we're gonna wait till spring, and we're going to have again a big discussion and a big debate and a lot of anguish about, well, should we, should we wait? Maybe we should wait until we have a problem. So my problem is, and I'm just afraid the delay is a delay, that it's not gonna, do you understand what I'm saying? And I know your intentions are all good, but to me, it's just putting off the inevitable.
You're saying.
Barbara and Eileen, I'm just trying to help you.
Barbara, thanks.
Sorry, I apologize.
Barbara?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but the design of the fence was to include a gate that we could actually use to either open or shut. So if the congressman is able to get us out of the 20,000 or whatever an amount it was, then that allows us to be selective on when that gate opens. But even more importantly, we will be able to close it, particularly on weekends, when we have a surge in the number of people using our parks who may be coming from out of state. So I see it as working either way, no matter which way it goes.
Eileen?
I don't know if this helps or hurts, but how about if we leave the decision as it was, because it's been made, and I can tell you that I will leave the decision as it is, and I won't put the fence up until the spring with the understanding that if Pappas, if Pappas comes through with some miracle in the wintertime, then it can be revisited. But just understand that the vote stands as it is, we just don't have to actually enact it until the spring. I just, I totally agree with Nancy that, I know there's some strong feelings about not putting up the fence, but just because you still feel that way doesn't mean that the vote didn't come out differently. So, so anyway, if that's what you want me to do, I can wait until the spring. I would prefer very, very, very much that you not rescind your, bring this up again or rescind your order. Because it's asked and answered, you know? I mean, how many, how many times do you have to bring up and answer a question over and over again? And just because you're in the, you might be in the minority, you keep bringing it, you know, is it really effective to keep bringing it up again and, you know, having the, having the answer still be the same? We just, we need to put paid to some of these things and get them done and be decisive. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Any, I don't hear the council as a whole asking you to delay that at this point. I know there are some of us that would much prefer that, but I, I don't, I don't think we can, you know, without getting a lot of people nodding heads yes, I don't think we can suggest that you change your certain course of action. Peter?
No, if you was, yeah, I understand. I understand. I just, you know, I get it, and I guess I thought because of the timeframe, if this had been and we could have gotten the fence up earlier, I would have had no problem with it because, you know. So again, I just thought about it and said, okay, we're beyond that threat. Wait till the spring. And I kind of wanted to feel everybody out, and I respect everybody's opinion on this. So I'm sorry to kind of.
Nope, that's good. I appreciate you.
I respect your opinion as well.
I do.
Okay. Anybody else with comments from the council? Since that was Peter? No? There's been a lot of activity to make sure that we're able to have a safe election next month. So I urge people that haven't already but want to apply for an absentee ballot to do so, but do it quickly because we're down to, what, three weeks or, and change maybe, before the election on November 3rd. And there's gonna be a lot of them to process. Meanwhile, just remember at St. John Newman, we're looking into slight modifications with how they handle same-day registrations in order to get them out of the main room and give us a little more room for the ballot locations. The same thing at the middle school. I understand they're talking about using the gym for same-day registrations. And we're moving the J Mews voting location to the high school to give us a bigger area. So we're doing all the things we can do to keep you folks safe, to keep us safe as workers, and to keep any of the people that are volunteering or working the polls to, safe the whole time. So we ask for your continued cooperation and help in respecting the guidelines, the wearing of a mask if you're in the polling place, keeping your distance from other folks so that we can all come through this COVID-free and look forward to a good, clean election and everybody's cooperation and help. Having said that, we're not wearing masks while we're sitting at this table spaced out in general, but you'll have noticed at the, at the outdoor meeting, even though we were outdoors, if we were going to be close to other people, we made sure we had our masks. And we want everybody to understand that we're all in this together. We're all trying to help each other to make sure that this stays as safe as we can keep it. And with that, if nobody has anything else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Lon Woods, seconded by Peter to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you very much, folks.